Good afternoon, everyone. A special council meeting of the Linden City Council has been scheduled for Friday, April 18th, 2025, at 12:00 PM in the Susan Hudak Auditorium, Linden High School, 121 West St. George Avenue, Linden, New Jersey. Official action will be taken. Portion of the meeting may be held in executive session. This special council meeting was called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notice of this meeting was sent via email to the local source, the Star Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and Taffin to Linden on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025. In addition, copies of this notice were posted on the bulletin board in City Hall and on the City of Linden website at www.linden nj.gov. This meeting is called to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a prayer and flag salute?
God of the universe, look thou with favor upon these here assembled, and bestow thy guidance upon the members of the governing body in their deliberations. This we ask in thy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ormond.
Here.
Javik.
Present.
Caldwell.
Excused.
President.
Rivas.
Excused.
Delgado.
Here.
Strano.
Here.
Armstead.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hudak.
Here.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Here.
Okay, I would like to read a statement to our Linden residents. We want to, dear Linden residents, we want to sincerely apologize regarding the rescheduling of our April 15th City Council meeting to today, April 18th. We fully recognize that today is an important religious holiday for many members of our community, and we deeply regret the necessity of this timing. On Tuesday, April 15th, what should have been our regularly scheduled council meeting unfortunately could not proceed due to a serious safety and security concern that put residents at risk. Our chief of police, dedicated officers, and fire chief are all present and worked tirelessly to manage an overcrowded and increasingly tense situation. The room had surpassed its safety capacity and especially alarming concern giving the number of young children and infants present. Despite efforts of the fire chief to implement a fair and safe solution, including rotating speakers in and out of the chamber, some attendees chose not to comply. With safety as the top priority, the fire chief was ultimately left with no choice but to shut down the meeting. We are incredibly grateful to our first responders who acted with professionalism, compassion, and concern for everyone present, especially our youngest residents. Please understand that postponing the meeting was one of the most difficult decisions we've had to make. We did so only because protecting the well-being of everyone in attendance, your neighbors, friends, and family members, had to be the primary concern. Please note that this emergency meeting is not one we wanted to hold on a religious holiday. However, it is required to ensure vital city functions can continue uninterrupted. Protecting essential services. Without immediate action, we risk disruptions to police and fire protection, garbage collection, and the timely pay of city employees who serve us every day. We also have to meet legal deadlines. The state law requires budget-related decisions to be made within the state's strict timeframe. Missing this deadline could result in costly penalties that would ultimately burden our The events of Tuesday evening placed us in a difficult and deeply unfortunate position. Please understand that this situation was not caused by the governing body, and that holding this meeting today was truly a last resort. Our respect for all religious observances remains unwavering, and we are genuinely saddened that circumstances have led to this conflict. Today's meeting has one purpose, the protection and continuation of the essential city services for every Linden resident. We ask for your understanding, patience, and compassion during this challenging time. It is our honor to serve you, and we remain committed to doing so with care, transparency, and respect for every member of our community. At this time, I'd like to ask councils, since it is a religious holiday, that we consider putting an end time to this meeting for today, since many are observing religious holidays with their family or friends. So I would ask councils to consider this for today.
Council President, point of order, please.
Yes.
Citing the obligations that many of us have today, and the fact that this was sprung upon us at a last-minute kind of a deal. I'd like to see the council meeting here limited to 2:00 PM today, and I'll make a motion to ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay. In the event of an emergency, the proper method of exiting the auditorium is through the doors in the rear of the room. Occupants should proceed down the staircase, out the front door, and move away from the area of the front steps. Any member of the public wishing to speak during the public comment session at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided in the back of the room with your name and address. Again, I'm going to repeat that. Any member in the public wishing to speak during the public comment session of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets that are at the back of the room. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate. If you wish to take a call, please leave the council chamber to do so. Okay. We'll move on to minutes, right?
Yep.
Okay. Can we have approval of the public session minutes of March 18th, 2025, please?
Council President, I'd like to move that the public meeting minutes of the council meeting of March 18th, 2025, be approved and I ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Any consented agenda items? All items listed with asterisks are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members' own request. We have items 1 through 4 today. Can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move for approval of the consented items 1 through 4 and request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, resolutions. Today, we have Resolutions 2025-213 through 2025-250. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolutions 2025-213 to 2025-2-52, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we're going to have an introduction of the 2025 municipal budget. Councilwoman Ormond.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to take this time to introduce the 2025 City of Linden Municipal Budget. The budget represents a total of $138,709,902.73 in expenditures for the year 2025. The Finance Committee will continue to work further to reduce expenses wherever possible. The Finance Committee has worked with every department head in keeping expenditures to a minimum. Based on the average assessed home value of $133,862, this year's increase is $327.21 for the year, or $27.27 per month. This includes an annual increase of $17.71, state-mandated increase for the library portion of the tax rate. Please be advised that anyone interested in obtaining a copy of the 2025 Municipal Budget, copies will be available in the City Clerk's office from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. If you are unable to pick up a copy, you may contact the City Clerk's office at 908-474-8452, and a copy will be sent to you. It is also available on the city website, www.linden nj.gov, for viewing at the Linden Municipal Library.
Okay, Mr. Bodak.
Municipal Budget Notice. The Municipal Budget of the City of Linden, County of Union, for the fiscal year 2025, be it resolved that the following statements of revenue and appropriations shall constitute the Municipal Budget for the year 2025. Be it further resolved that said budget be published in the Union County Local Source in the issue of May 1, 2025. The governing body of the City of Linden does hereby approve the following as the budget for 2025. Notice is hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by council members of the City of Linden, County of Union, on April 18th, 2025. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at City Hall on May 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2025 may be presented to taxpayers or other interested persons.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, I will now call upon Mrs. Ormond for the April 2025 finance report, please.
Thank you, Council President. Approval is requested for the following finance actions: the payment of bills totaling $3,943,975.18. Bills have been signed by the mayor, council president, and finance chairwoman, and a detailed check register and vouchers are on file in the clerk's office. We are in receipt of the investment made by the city treasurer for the month of March at the rate of 4.15%. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Epstein.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Epstein. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call upon Councilman Strano, Chairman of Personnel, for the Personnel Report.
Thank you, Council President. This is the Personnel Report for this meeting of April of 2025. We have, I think, seven items here. Number one, in the Tax Collector's Office, is A, approving the appointment of July McNeil Clerk I, full-time, effective May 1, 2025, at the salary of $37,298 a year, and is subject to a successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. Two is in a Police Department. A is approving the posting of, for one, technical support specialist II, in the salary range of $68,443 to $128,607. B is approving the resignation and good standing of a special law enforcement officer, Kevin Shackleton, and that's effective March 28th of 25. C is approving the appointment of Alexis Canadis, a public safety telecommunicator trainee, full-time, at the salary of $44,000, effective April 21st of 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. D is approving the appointment of Kiana Miller, public safety telecommunicator trainee, full-time, at the salary of $44,000. It's effective April 21st of 2025, and that's subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. Three is in the Construction Code. A is approving the posting statewide of a part-time inspector as below. One part-time for building, one part-time for electrical, and one part-time for plumbing. And B is amending the hire date of Kyla Lott, Clerk I, to be March 25th of 2025. Item four, in the Tax Assessor's Office, amending the hire date of Pamela McFarley, temporary Clerk I, to be March 31st of 2025. Five is in Recreation. A is approving the seasonal list on file in the clerk's office. Six, in the Division of Public Works. A is the approval of seasonal list that's on file in the clerk's office. B is approving the promotion of Joshua Reyes as a truck driver Tier 2, effective April 16th, 2025, at the annual rate of $22 per hour. C is approving the promotion of Malik Welch as a truck driver 2, effective April 16th, 2025, at the annual rate of $22 per hour. D is approving the appointment of Xavier Wright as a laborer Tier 2, at the annual rate of $19.32 per hour, and that's effective April 22nd, 2025, and that's pending the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. E is approving the posting of three labors at the rate of $19.32 to $34.37 per hour. F is approving the posting of a supervisor of public works at the salary of $69,000 to $136,297. G is amending the hire date of Mackenzie Charlton, truck driver, to be April 7th of 2025. H is approving the voluntary resignation and good standing for Chester LePierre, truck driver Tier 2, and that's effective March 28th of 2025. Item number seven, in our Law Department, accepting the resignation and good standing of April C. Bachnight Esquire as the Assistant Municipal Prosecutor, and that is effective April 30th of 2025. Eight, in City Clerk's Office, approving the volunteering resignation, not in good standing, of Diana Rosada, Clerk I, bilingual, effective March 28th of 2025. B is approving the posting for one clerk, bilingual, full-time, at the annual salary between $37,298 to $64,807. C is approving the posting of a Clerk I, full-time, at the annual salary of $37,298 to $64,807. And nine, in the Personnel, is approved the FMLA NJFLA leaves that are on file in the Division of Personnel. Move for approval, and I ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Epstein.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. We'll now move on to ordinances for our first reading, beginning with Ordinance 6922, please.
Yes, Council President, I move for introduction.
No, 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 he's going to read that one.
An ordinance amending Chapter 10, Section 2.1, entitled "Subcode Fees by the City Council in the City of Linden," being ordained by the City Council of the City of Linden as follows. Section 1, Chapter 10, dash 2.1, entitled "Subcode Fees," shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced as follows.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6922, please?
Council President, I move for introduction of Ordinance Number 69-22, and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6923, please.
A bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $880,000 for City Hall parking garage renovations for the Division of Engineering for and by the City of Linden, and authorizing the issuance of $830,000 in bonds or notes of the city for financing part of the appropriation.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6923, please?
Yes, Council President, I move 6923 for introduction and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6924, please.
A bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $1,111,000 for various capital improvements for the Division of Transportation and Properties for and by the City of Linden, and authorizing the issuance of $1,055,450 bonds or notes of the city for financing part of the appropriation.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6924, please?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to move 6924 for introduction and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6925, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7, Traffic, of an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and is amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7, Traffic, shall be, and the same is hereby amended, as follows. 7-19, Parking, stopping, or standing prohibited at all times, safety sticks sewn. 7-19.6, Locations, add West Blanky Street, North Side, East Blanky Street, North Side, East Blanky Street, South Side, 400 Block of Northwood Avenue, West Side, 500 Block of Northwood Avenue, West Side, 300 Block of Roseell Street, West Side, 2,400 Block of East Linden Avenue, South Side, 2,500 Block of East Linden Avenue, South Side, 300 Block of Ashton Avenue, East Side.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6925, please?
Council President, I move we introduce Ordinance 69-25 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6926, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7, Traffic, of an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7, Traffic, shall be, and the same is hereby amended, as follows. 7-27, Bus Stops, Add East Pricey Street, eastbound, on the northwesterly side.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6926, please?
Council President, I move we introduce Ordinance 69-26 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6927, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7, Traffic, of an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November 23, 1999, and approved November 24, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7, Traffic, shall be, and the same is hereby amended, as follows. 7-15, Parking by Permit Only in Designated Residential Areas. 7-15.7, Residential Overnight Parking Permits, Delete. 7-15.7C, North Park Avenue, and 7-15.7D, Point 1. Definition and Word Usage, Add 7-15.7C, North Park Avenue Area, and 7-15-7D, Bayway Area.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6927, please?
Council President, I move we introduce Ordinance 69-27 and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6928, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 31, dash 4.1, entitled "District Regulations by the City Council of the City of Linden."
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6928, please?
Council President, I move that we introduce 6928 for introduction and ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Ordinance 6929, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 28 and Chapter 29, entitled "Land Use Procedures and Land Development," respectively by the City Council in the City of Linden.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of ordered in sixty-nine twenty-nine, please?
Yes, Council President, I move, we move ordnance sixty-nine twenty-nine for introduction and request a second. Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Mohamed.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes. Okay, we're going to now move on to comments from members of the public in attendance. Okay, can, we have the sign-in sheet for public comment? Come forward, please. Thank you. Okay, just a reminder, I'm going to ask the speakers to come up and state their name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Okay, our first speaker will be Frank Halloran.
Craig Halloran, one-twenty Donaldson Place. First of all, I'd like to say happy holidays to everybody. It's good to see so many people out at a meeting tonight, or today. One, my main comment for today would have to do with overdevelopment, but I do see that there are some plans for a parking deck next to the, would be considered the Clark property. I would encourage the city to pursue this issue of a parking deck next to the Clark property to the fullest extent possible. Other than that, like I said, happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, our next speaker will be Tom Corby, I believe.
Cooney?
Cooney?
Cooney. Thomas Cooney, two thousand Summit Terrace. The only, I was kind of going on what he was saying, overdevelopment. Is anybody taking care of the sewer system?
Can you please state your name and address, your address, please?
Okay, I did already, but. Thomas Cooney, two thousand Summit Terrace.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay. It's kind of like overdevelopment. You got all these high rises going up all over the place. What is being done to the sewer system and stuff? Is anybody looking at that? You can't put, where the big apartment building is on a corner of wood, there's going to be, let's just say, a thousand people between all those buildings. There wasn't a thousand people there when all the businesses were there, and the businesses would come and go during the day. Now there's going to be somebody there twenty-four hours a day. What is going on with the sewer system? I've seen the sewer jet on Orchard three or four times already. What's going on? Is anybody doing anything? The sewer system's got to be from the thirties in this city. So, that's my concern. Is anybody going to do anything?
Thank you, sir, for your comment. Seema Andrea?
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 Say Eight Sherwood Circle? From Eight Sherwood Circle?
Okay, Eight Sherwood Circle? Seema Andrea, Eight Sherwood Circle? Okay, I'm going on to the next. Ronald Martins? Okay, here he comes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ronald Martins, three-twenty-eight Minor Terrace.
Go ahead, sir.
As some of you know, I was a volunteer with the Linden Shade Tree Commission for many years. Per city ordinance, the Shade Tree Commission was responsible for the regulating, planting, care and control of the shade trees upon and in the highways and parks of the city. Along with three other volunteer commissioners and Chairman Jeff Tandle, we pruned city trees, educated the community about issues related to city trees, and tried to enforce the tree ordinance. Former Chairman Jeff Tandle is a landscape architect and arborist who donated many hours of his time and expertise managing the spring and fall plantings, selecting and tagging the trees to be planted, and making sure that the trees were planted correctly by the contractor. Without explanation or discussion, the Shade Tree Commission was dissolved by City Council on December twenty, two thousand twenty-two, a date which will live in irony. We now live in a city named after a tree, which has the image of a tree in its city seal, but yet got rid of its own Shade Tree Commission. It would not be out of place to have the seal of our fair city next to the word ironic in the dictionary. The vote to dissolve was eight to one in favor, and even though some of you knew it was not in the best interest of the city, you still voted yes. Only former Councilman Armando Medina voted no, and he later told me that getting rid of the commission was, quote, "the dumbest thing we have ever done," end quote. Instead of addressing issues with the commission, council instead threw out the baby with the bathwater. I bring up this unpleasant can of worms because next Friday, April twenty-fifth, is Arbor Day. The City of Linden held its first Arbor Day tree planting ceremony in two thousand eighteen as School One, followed by School Eight in two thousand nineteen, no twenty-twenty ceremony due to COVID, School Two in two thousand twenty-one, School Five in two thousand twenty-two, and School Six in two thousand twenty-three. Those ceremonies were organized by the Shade Tree Commission. Last year, the torch was passed to the city, which organized a tree planting at School Four, and this year, the city will plant a tree at School Ten and hold the ceremony on Friday, May second, two P M. at School Ten.
Sir, your time is up.
Mayor, to your credit, you attended every one of these events, and we all enjoy-
Mr. Martins, your time is up.
And we all enjoy the time with the kids. I'm done.
Thank you.
Although our fair city, named after a tree-
Shayna Ferhing?
No longer has a Shade Tree Commission.
Mr. Martins, your time is up.
At least the Arbor Day ceremony that we began has survived.
Next speaker is Shayna Ferhing.
Happy Arbor.
Nine-twenty-three Summit. Please state your name and address for the record.
Shayna Ferhing, nine-two-three Summit Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to start by saying good afternoon to everyone here and thanking you for your time and the opportunity to speak to you about is, about what is a very pressing issue. Some of the ordinances that were proposed during this meeting are veiled anti-Semitism. I am disappointed that what is playing out on the national stage has infected our community as well. On the city website, there are three words listed under the name Linden. They are community, diversity, and progress. I do not feel that these ordinances and the way that the meeting was conducted earlier this week and rushedly moved to today abide by those values. Further, the statement that was read at the beginning of this meeting, I feel unfairly shifts blame onto residents who only wanted to express their concern for the values of their city. While I can understand that progress, as mentioned as one of those values, is important and necessary for the growth of the city, I also recognize that diversity is important as well. Ms. Ormond is my representative of my ward, and in previous sessions, she has stood up to those who promote anti-diversity measures regardless of community. I am deeply concerned that not enough members of this council are willing to do that on this issue because as I look at the council, I do not see any members of the Jewish community represented. Further, I ask that you consider the values of the community, the values that it was built on a hundred years ago, and say, "We may need progress. We may not have found the right way to do it, but we are going to try." That does not mean passing these ordinances in a rush. It does not mean not posting them for us to look at so that I can prepare comments specific to said ordinances, but rather perhaps a forum for discussion without a three-minute time limit where we can actually review the ordinances that will affect us and our city for generations. I am deeply concerned because I truly care and value the city and only want to see progress moving forward. As I mentioned, I am disappointed that we are at this point, although I will say that in the past, as issues of anti-Semitism have come up in Linden, they were described as a poor choice of words. I ask that this not be a poor choice of action. Nothing has gone forward yet. It is not too late to vote no and revise the ordinances with voices and concerns from the community in mind.
The next speaker is Nate Ferling.
Good morning. My name is Nathaniel Ferhing from nine-two-three Summit Street.
Go ahead, sir.
Firstly, I want to commend Mrs. Ormond, my council member, and the rest of the City Council members. Your hard work is important to the running of our shared city, and I appreciate it. Furthermore, specifically, Mrs. Ormond, I want to say I've seen you stand up to the thinly veiled anti-Semitic comments made in City Hall, and I appreciate it. Thank you. Each time, you've done so with force, reiterating that the first word is no place for hatred, and that we all live together peacefully. I truly know that you mean what you say, and I appreciate you standing up for what's right. These zoning ordinances are not just a Jewish concern. They restrict basement usage. They restrict homeowners from making common sense improvements to their homes and their communities. We have pride in our community, and so does everyone. But they do smack of restricting Jewish growth. When large amounts of white people fled the cities in the mid-fifties, they called it white flight, and they restricted others from following them in the suburbs by enacting strict zoning regulations. Four changes to the Linden zoning code in seven years in an inconsistent manner is not a way to celebrate one hundred years of inclusionary history. We will not solve the housing crisis in America by restricting housing. Thank you.
John Kazar?
John Kazar, twenty-three West Muntz Avenue. Well, well, well. So this is all we got to do to get what we want, I see. Thank you, everyone who showed up. Man, wow. I love my city, and wow, it's great to see everyone here. I just want to make a point that if I did on Tuesday what happened, I definitely would have been arrested, and that meeting definitely would have went on, okay? There was a, there was a double standard there, but I, I loved seeing it packed. I also want to say that I'm no keyboard warrior. I'm not a Facebook warrior. Anything I say on Facebook, I'll say here. I'm not a fan of what I see in Sunnyside, and that's just my opinion, and we live in the greatest country in the world, so I'm still able to get along with everybody in this city on what's going on. We told the mayor years ago, we told the mayor years ago, this was going to happen, but he was too busy getting every single member of his family on the payroll. I find it real funny, I find it real funny, that the mayor's now telling our Hasidic neighbors he's trying to preserve the character of Sunnyside when he's busy playing Legoland throughout the rest of the city, building high-density multifamily units. No, 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 even better, even better. I find it even funnier that in two thousand twenty-three, me and all my friends, me and all my neighbors, packed City Hall in a similar fashion, overflowed that planning board multiple nights. They kept pushing that meeting off, 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 trying to make us bend. We begged him to preserve the character of my neighborhood, but what did he do? He afforded his builder buddy, who was putting some fazools in his pocket, not one, not two, not three, nope, not four, but five, five variances, so that he could shove that eight-town home building that looks disgusting on my block. You didn't care about preserving the character of my neighborhood. So, this is where we are. This is going to be great to watch, because I definitely am going to love watching this. This is the downfall of Derek Armstead.
Robert Scutro? Robert Scutro? Please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Scutro, four-sixteen Halloran Street.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I want to know who is behind, and what is the reason for this ordinance sixty-six twenty-nine?
All right.
He can make comments.
Just make your comments, sir.
Okay, because the problem is, you are elected officials. You cannot have double standards, okay, to support Mr. Kazar, okay? There's pictures of what you allowed on Russell and Stinson. Eight townhouses go sideways on an area next to residential homes, but that's permissible. You have twenty-five West Price Street and forty-four West Price Street where you allow condominiums to put up next to houses blocking sunlight into their backyards, but that's acceptable. You have twenty-five A East Ten Street where it's acceptable, okay, to build our townhouses sideways. You cannot have double standards, and you must explain to the people who is behind it and what is the main reason. You just can't ignore it, okay? No answers?
No comments at this time from the mayor and council. Mr. Scutro, I could tell you that this, this body has received threats about litigation, about the ordinances that are before them, and it's upon my advice that this mayor and council not comment because it's been my experience. Any comments made, if there is in fact a lawsuit, that member's comments is quoted in that lawsuit. So at this point in time, we are not going to comment on the specifics of those ordinances.
Okay, I just, before I close, I want to mention one thing to you. I brought to your attention six months ago, four Saint Marks, who utilizes city property for his own backyard on taxpayers' expense, okay? He puts up illegal no-left-term signs. To date, not one of you, including you, Mayor, I addressed it, because you told me he keeps the area great. Well, everybody should keep the area great and take care of the kids, okay? You could put condominiums on West Price Street, but a family with seven kids can't build a house to suit their family needs. Thank you.
Patricia Hero?
I miss Brad. My name is Pat Hero. I live at one hundred West Elizabeth Avenue. First, while I accept your apology of holding this meeting on Good Friday, the most solemn day of the Christian year commemorating the death of the suffering servant spoken of in Isaiah fifty-three, I wonder, could this meeting not have been held on Monday? Can you answer me after? While I was delighted at the large public turnout on Tuesday, I have to wonder about the lack of compliance of those in attendance, of all the people who were, who were not seated. Could, could they not have stepped out into the hallways, and then when somebody finished speaking, someone else would have gone out into the hallways, and someone else in the hallways could have come in and taken their seat? I wonder if we will have this problem again on second reading. Oh, and I do miss the days when we could speak on first reading about some of these things. The problem when we speak on second reading is you're already ready to vote. You don't know what we're thinking. So, I would appreciate bringing it back when we could speak on first reading in addition to speaking on second meeting. Now, I have supported the, the building of a mikvah, the planning board meeting, and have spoken in favor of religious liberty, and spoke against the mayor's comments last year about certain individuals in the Jewish community. However, people do move to a community with zoning and plant, and planning laws. I'm not sure. I haven't seen the copy of the ordinance. I'm not going to make any comments as to whether it is anti-Semitic or not. I will be interested in reviewing it, but I have seen buildings that are being built that I have very much concern about. Having been in a fire in Arlington, Virginia, I've seen some buildings that I wonder how the fire department can even get around the side of those buildings. So, we care about the safety of everybody in Linden, and we want to make sure everybody is safe, and some of these laws are enacted to keep you safe. They're not necessarily against a group of, one group of people or another. They're for the protection of all of us in the community. So again, I want to see it, the ordinance, and I will be speaking, hopefully, good Lord willing, I'll be speaking about it on the next council meeting. Thank you.
Diane W.
Good afternoon, Diane W., Sixth Ward. I have lived here fifty years on and off. I know Linden. I know the changes, but I was mortified by that meeting, which I did not attend. After going twenty-one years to meetings, there were like five of us. Anyway, the building codes are for our safety. Someone did an illegal renovation, removed a firewall when a, when a fire department official went to inspect. He fell through the floor. He could have died, as well as any member of the Hasidic congregation that went upstairs. You should be concerned about the safety of your community members as well as city officials. I have heard of only one time where a Hasidic member reached out in the First Ward to be part of a new pocket park celebration. That person was trying to- That person was trying to be a good Linden citizen. Has anyone in this auditorium gone to the library? They have great children's programs. And I donated a stack of books on Jewish folklore and other children's stories. I read them first, because I like learning about other religions and traditions. I go to a friend's Passover, would be my last supper, and enjoy the customs. I would love to be invited to a Jewish wedding, please. I love learning about other people's customs. Become a part of the Linden community. Reach out to your neighbors of other religions. I bring gifts to my neighbors for Al-Fayed, I hope I said that right, and they give me Christmas presents. The rules are set by our officials are for everyone's safety. And you have decided to move here, well, follow our safety rules and conduct yourselves at meetings in a respectful manner. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Joseph Katz?
Yes, I am putting it on.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Katz, 34 Harvard.
Go ahead, sir.
I want to open by rejecting the tone of the opening remarks. First, describing them as the most difficult decision you've ever made is exaggerated and totally unhelpful and in no way true. Secondly, please don't frame this as though you've generously allowed citizens to exercise their rights. We are here because the Open Public Meetings Act guarantees us the right to be present, and everyone in this room, whether they are for, against, or whatever their position may be, it could be totally misguided, has a right to be there, has a right to be present, and it is your responsibility to ensure that right is fully accommodated. It has become clear that the council have used these meetings as a mere formality, something they're legally obligated to hold rather than a genuine opportunity to hear from the constituents. But the right to speak and be heard is fundamental in a democratic society. Elected officials, you are our public servants. It is your duty to listen to the people that you represent, whether these views expressed are popular, whether they're unpopular, whether they're misguided, or whether they are wrong. And I should add, while the gentleman from the Sheikh Society was speaking, I was looking at all of you, and half of you were not paying attention, were doing something else, and it's shocking, and it's not respectful to someone who clearly has dedicated hours and hours and hours of work to the city. So you can hide behind your lawsuit excuses, but this is not what we call menschlichkeit. It's not being generous, it's not being fair to the people around you. And so I say to you as follows. If you're unwilling to carry out responsibilities as a public servant of listening, of engaging, of being accountable to the public, then consider your roles. We are concerned citizens exercising our right, and we demand of you that you fulfill your responsibilities of listening to us.
Just wanted to say, I want to invite Mr. Katz to look at these lights glaring in our faces and see why we can't look.
Hi, good afternoon.
Please state your name and address for the record.
No problem. Jerel Smith, 9th Ward. Pardon my voice. I was told to put my name down just in case I had something to say. I'm one that don't make rash decisions or rash comments without gathering information, but I'm also one who don't mind putting a face to the name, so you will be seeing my face and name again at a later time. Thank you.
West Gibbon Street?
Hi, my name is Truly Mandelbaum. I live at 315 West Gibbon Street.
Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, council members and Mayor Armstead. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming here today. I speak with deep concern about the proposed zoning ordinance. While it's claimed this version addresses community concerns, we were not meaningfully consulted. This continues a troubling pattern we've experienced in Linden. For context, Linden's zoning stayed largely the same for over 35 years, but since Hasidic families began moving in just seven and a half years ago, there have been four major zoning changes, each making it harder for us to practice our faith and establish roots. After our first synagogue was legally approved, lot size requirements jumped from 20,000 to 70,000 and then to 90,000 square foot. Lot coverage for homes was cut from 40% to 30%. Now, new restrictions are proposed again. This pattern raises serious questions. We're told the changes are about environment and stormwater, but why do these concerns only surface when our community grows? Why are high-density apartments promoted nearby if open space is a priority? To many of us, the message is clear. These zoning changes disproportionately impact the Jewish community. They feel targeted, meant to limit our ability to live and grow here. We're not asking for special treatment, just equal protection under the law, fear, transparent governance, and the chance to be valued members of a city that claims to stand for community diversity and progress. Our request is to pause this ordinance, engage in genuine dialogue with all stakeholders, not rush it through a last-minute session. We came to Linden with hope, believing we could build a life here. Today, I ask you to restore that hope. Show us Linden is truly a place where all families can thrive regardless of their faith. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Shia Singer, 2106 Summer Terrace. Thank you, Council President and council members. I have moved to Linden with my young family in the beginning of 2020. Me and my wife were looking for a great place to raise our young family. We have heard of this great neighborhood called Linden. We have chosen to make it a city that we will raise our kids. At this point, I would like to thank Chief Hart and the chief of the Fire Department and all other emergency officials that make it a safe and a great place to live. When we originally bought our home, it was great for the size and our needs we had back then. As years pass, my family has grown, and we have started making plans how to accommodate our family needs. We have set up hard-earned earnings and tapped into in a home equity that the home value has gone up in the last five years. We have started with the permitting and plan process, hiring local contractors and architects and local craftsmen to expand our home. We have bought when we moved in and make it more suitable for the family size and needs for our family size. We were sitting with the architect, and he has notified us that in the last few months or a year, there's been a change in the zoning, which made our house size lose over 1,500 square foot, essential place needed for our family needs. For example, we needed a kosher kitchen plus a kosher Passover kitchen, playroom and study room, and we like to host friends and family for Shabbos. The architect explained that this change is being made, and there are coming changes that will further restrict the growth and our plans, how we can expand our home. The new proposed zoning seems to cater only to large developers, but leaving us families with a lot of children without any options. If you think that this change won't affect you if you don't have a large family, just keep in mind, cutting the allowed square foot and percentage will slash your home value with a lot of percent. I want to just understand, how can the city afford losing all the new construction in the area when a new construction permitting process generates over $10,000 in fees and zoning and permit fees per home? Just do the math, how much that would income for the city that loses. In 20 and 2021, when I moved in, there were a lot of great new construction housing being built in the area by many developers that are around over here for many, many years, which large families and many families from all communities bought these homes, not just in Sunnyside, all around Linden, and their beautiful homes replacing old houses.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Ben Zian Rottenberg, 509 Academy Terrace.
Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, dear council members and all guests, many of which we've worked in the past with and got along very well. Gratitude is one of our core principles. In fact, we are now celebrating Passover holidays in which we express our gratitude to the almighty God for redeeming us from Egyptian slavery more than 3,000 years ago. Furthermore, despite us being enslaved and even tortured by the Egyptians, still, we are commanded, quote, "You shall not abhor an Egyptian," end quote. Why not? Quote, "For you were a stranger in his land," end quote, "and for that alone, show gratitude." As such, being now a Linden resident for more than seven years, I would like to take this opportunity to express my personal gratitude to all of you sitting here. You are giving away from your time and effort to enhance this city with all its needs, and it's truly appreciated. And as I say to my friends and neighbors, we did not move into an area, we moved into a neighborhood, and therefore, we cherish and appreciate all the neighbors. That being said, I would like to ask you, dear council members, to oppose these upcoming zoning changes you're about to vote on. The fact that for decades and decades, zoning rules has not been changed, and more so, the glaring contradiction that while imposing severe restrictions on our single-family homes, high-density apartment buildings are championed nearby, makes it feel personal, not policy-driven. Please, dear councilmen and women, be on the side of allowing decent people to raise families. Please, be on the side of law-abiding residents to thrive, and be encouraging of people seeking to raise their children in harmony. Please, let this community of gracious people flourish. Thank you.
Hey, can I have, can I have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the public portion of our meeting and ask for a second respectfully, please.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
If there's no more comments, yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, the next council meeting will be as follows. Council conference meeting Monday, May 19th at 6:00 PM in the council conference room, City Hall. Council conference meeting prior to the council meeting Tuesday, May 20th at 6:00 PM in the council room, City Hall, 301 Northwood Avenue. Council meeting Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, City Hall, 301 Northwood Avenue. These meetings will be held in person. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, Council President.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Mohammed?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes.